Special welcome to two of our city, uh, school board members, Ms. Nancy State and also Ms. Tiffany Beluga-Brannon. Nice to have you all with us. Uh, with, uh, our, pardon me, I'm sorry.
Here we go. Okay, better. Once again, I welcome each of you and a special welcome to Nancy State and Tiffany Beluga-Brannon from the school board. Uh, substitute representative from the chamber tonight, our city manager, Michael Brant. He is on the board there, so, it's good to have each one of you with us here this evening, though. Uh, we also welcome any press that might be in attendance here tonight and all of those who may be joining us on our website or over social media, we welcome you as well. Uh, first order of business this evening will be additions and/or deletions to our agenda, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have three additions to the agenda this evening. They are all closed sessions. The first request is for a, um, closed session to protect the, uh, notice of award, uh, regarding, um, a, an award to the city, uh, that I need to keep quiet as far as the public at this point, can't disclose it. Um, the second is a personnel, uh, purpose, and the third is a real estate purpose.
Okay, you've heard this, uh, from the city manager. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended by our city manager.
So, we have a motion and a second, so you may record your votes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I, that, that would be new nine, uh, on, on the agenda than renumber from there.
Yeah, renumber ten and eleven. Okay, thank you. Okay, the votes have been recorded and the agenda has been approved unanimously. Uh, we're now down to public forum. We've had one person to sign up to speak this evening. Uh, Joe Gray, if you would like to come to the podium and just state your name and your, uh, subject for the clerk, please. There'll be a two-minute time limit.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and the council. I am here today representing Colonial Village, um, here in Thomasville on the borderline of Trinity and Thomasville. Our home addresses say Thomasville, but yet we're in that Trinity red dividing. So, I'm here asking today that, um, we've had a new homeowner move in on the corner of Montana and Sunrise. This new homeowner has now put up a backyard fence, causing even more of a blind spot coming around Sunrise. We are trying to petition to have a always stop put at the intersection of Montana and Sunrise to kind of, one, break some of that speed because I understand this is a, a, a cut-through street. So, we eat a lot of trucks that come through there. We get a lot of speeders that come through there. Um, and coming out of Montana where a lot of our home, homeowners are, coming out of there, it is nothing but a tragedy waiting to happen. Um, so I'm here representing, because I'm the president of the HOA, asking if we could possibly, possibly look at either getting a four-way stop at that intersection or speed bumps put along throughout, uh, Sunrise between County Line and Unity to kind of break that speed because it's very dangerous, um, pulling out or even walking or people out to walk in their dogs or anything that's kind of going on.
Okay, thank you very much. And we've heard your request and if we can get that proper, personal to take care of that. Now down to recognitions and presentations. Tonight we have with us a United, uh, United Way of Representative, uh, Kristi Hagy and, uh, Scott Sires.
Who's going to present this tonight.
I know. My, my traveling billboard. I have one of these every year and I'll show it to y'all in a minute, but I do want our guests in attendance to kind of see what we do and who we serve.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Whereas from the time of its inception in nineteen fifty-five, United Way of Davidson County has been strengthening our community by supporting programs from twenty-five community partners which tackle some of our community's greatest challenges, including issues such as health, education, and financial stability. And whereas for seventy years, United Way of Davidson County has made a substantial impact by supporting a strong network of agencies, corporate partners, donors, supporters, volunteers, government entities, civic organizations, and community advocates who are committed to ensuring that our children are well-educated, that struggling families can achieve self-sufficiency, that our community is healthy and safe, that our most vulnerable residents are cared for, and diversity is embraced and celebrated. And whereas the United Way of Davidson County's mission is bringing together community resources to identify and meet the human service needs in Davidson County through responsible leadership. And whereas it is crucial to, to recognize and support the United Way of Davidson County and highlight how the funding they provide has made a positive impact in the lives of thousands of our community members, together we can build a stronger community and a better future for our children. And whereas the United Way of Davidson County will begin its annual campaign on August first, two thousand twenty-five, now therefore Raleigh York Junior, Mayor of the City of Thomasville, and the Thomasville City Council support the United Way of Davidson County and hereby proclaim that United Way of Davidson County's annual campaign be recognized and celebrated during the month of August. And we encourage all Davidson County residents to look for ways to make a difference in our community in witness whereof the mayor has, uh, set his hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this, the twenty-first day of July, two thousand twenty-five. Welcome, Kristi. If you'd like to say a few things, give me to hold that for you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to shake your hand first. Thank you so much.
Step up to the microphone over here.
Yeah, I always like a chance to say a few words. Can I tell this?
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor York and members of city council for this special recognition. The United Way of Davidson County is honored and excited to be celebrating our seventieth anniversary. I've actually been a part of United Way for twenty-three years as of today, so that's really special. This incredible milestone would not be possible without the unwavering support of our amazing community. As we kick off yet another campaign, I was recently reminded of exactly why we do this work. One of the programs funded by the United Way provides evening meals to local elementary school students. We learned that before receiving those meals, I get choked up about this one, guys, um, one young student was so hungry, he was scavenging through his classmates' bookbags and lunchboxes during recess. It's heartbreaking, but it's also a powerful reminder of why our mission matters. Stories like his fuel our passion and our commitment to helping those in need. Thank you again for your continued support and everything that you all do to uplift our community. And thanks again for this special recognition.
Get the whole crowd.
That's right.
All right, I get it.
I know there's a glare, I know.
You know, it's got to go on social media, right? Thank y'all so much.
You're not banned away?
No, not banned. I wish I was. Talk about being banned a long time.
You're a lot closer to banned, White House.
Okay, we're now down to public hearings. Uh, this is a public hearing regarding a petition for voluntary annexation of one twenty-nine Kennedy Road. Uh, the applicant owner is Ferentilio Incorporated. Location is Kennedy Road, parcel is one-six-three-three-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-four. And this is, this is a, uh, public hearing in consideration of this ordinance to extend the corporate limits to include that property. Uh, council usually will take action after the public hearing, but this also takes action from the county.
Missioners, and that will not be done until next month, so this will come back as a regular item next month for action, but we'll do our clo, our public hearing at this time. So, I open the public hearing and ask anyone that would speak in favor of this, uh, petition to please come forward. Not seeing anyone come forward. Would anyone like to come and speak against? And no one against, so I declare the public hearing closed. And like I said, this will come back next month for action on this, uh, annexation. Our next item of business will be our consent agenda. We'll recognize our deputy city manager, Mr. Eddie Bowling, for this.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, the items on your consent agenda are as follows. Item A is consideration of minutes of the special call meeting on June second, two thousand twenty-five. Consideration of minutes of the briefing meeting, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Consideration of minutes on the council meeting from June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Now, item D is a budget amendment, two thousand twenty-six dash P-one dash zero-one. This amendment appropriates five thousand dollars of funding from Duke Energy Foundation storm preparedness grant for the purchase of NOAA weather radios for and emergency preparedness kits, which will be distributed by the Thomasville Fire Department to vulnerable households. The program's intended to ensure residents have access to critical alerts and basic emergency supplies before, during, and after severe weather events. Two thousand dollars is also from the Lowe's Hometown Grant, and it's appropriated for the purchase of tools for the Community Tool Rental Trailer. Item E is consideration of approval of creation of network administrator position in the MIS department. This is a request to create the position of network administrator, uh, which was originally approved to take place fiscal year, uh, twenty-six, budgeted to start in January. This is a request to move this position to hire immediately to assist in our networking, um, capabilities within the city. And, um, we would move the current open position to be filled in January as opposed to now, so there'd be a net effect of zero to the budget. Item F is consideration of resolution of tentative award of contract to North State Water and Sewer Incorporated based on a base bid of three million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and forty dollars for installation and approximately eighty-five hundred linear feet of water line, replacement water lines. Uh, the roads to be affected by this are Flair Road from Covino Drive to the point five hundred and fifty-three feet past Lambeth Drive, Lambeth Drive from Flair Road, approximately nine hundred and sixty feet to the existing hydrant, Ford Street from Old Lexington Road to Meadow Brook Avenue, Haywood Street from Jones Avenue to Finch Avenue, Jones Avenue from West Main to Spring Street, Jones Circle in its entirety, Pine Street from Fisher Ferry to Scowls Heights, Whirl Street from Pine Street to Wal, to Walnut Street. And lastly, item G is consideration of resolution adopting a Davidson County-Randolph County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan is research study, uh, to, designed to identify hazards, risks, vulnerabilities, and seek ways to mitigate the impact of this risk. Um, under section three twenty-two of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, local governments must develop an all-hazard mitigation plan in order to be eligible to receive future hazard mitigation grant program funds. That is your consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you very much. And what's the pleasure of counsel with regard to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented by, uh, deputy city manager.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Discussion, go right ahead.
There's a whole lot of stuff here. Seven items, a whole lot of stuff. We have discussed each of these a lot in our committee meetings, uh, some of them over a couple months. So, we, you know, it's not just, we're just blowing stuff by you. Please understand that it's been a lot of, a lot of discussion about this stuff. We understand what it is, but there's a lot of stuff that we have taken in, in one vote. And, uh, so just, just understand we're not pulling stuff over your eyes.
Any more discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. And we have seven in the affirmative, so, uh, the consent agenda has been approved. We're now down to our regular agenda. Item A is consideration of enactment of, uh, towing ordinance in parking lots. I'm going to recognize our city attorney, uh, Ms. Misty Whitman.
Good evening. Uh, Chief Carter and I spent some time working on this. This is a problem that has come up, and we've talked about this at committee meetings as well, and we've been talking about it for a few months, where there's some concerns regarding predatory towing practices in some of our lots in the community. Um, this, this is typically happening in larger lots like South Gate Shopping Center, Walmart, Ingalls, uh, Food Lion, those types of lots, where they are privately owned lots, but they are open basically for the general public to come in and utilize the, um, tenants that are leasing the spaces there. So, we needed something in place regarding what needed to be done in order to tow vehicles out of those lots. And so, this ordinance sets forth that those are defined as communal parking lots, and it differentiates between privately owned parking lots. Privately owned parking lots are folks that have parking lots where people can lease parking spaces and, and park. Um, so those folks that have privately owned lots can utilize the procedures that are set forth in North Carolina General Statute twenty dash two nineteen point two, and they can actually have, uh, follow certain procedures and have some towing of those vehicles that are illegally parked in those private lots. But for communal lots, um, if there are issues with cars being tow, uh, being parked illegally, um, those folks will still need to contact the police department, and the police department will continue to, um, look at those areas as if they are looking at any other parking areas on the streets and so forth. And so, that's what this ordinance provides, and it's set forth here, and you have a copy of it as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I defer to counsel for action on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move that we, excuse me, we approve the ordinance amending chapter seventy-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Thomasville as described by the attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second now. Is there any discussion? Okay, you may record your vote. Okay, I have seven in, in the affirmative, so that item has been approved. Uh, item B, consideration of approval of easement for parcel number one-six-zero-six-nine-zero-zero-zero-E-zero-zero-zero-one, the intersection of National Highway and Council Street. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The owner of this parcel came, uh, forth and, uh, offered the city a opportunity to purchase and/or, uh, secure an easement on this small lot that's a leftover from, uh, when the, uh, the area that colloquially, locally is known as Slimy Corner, um, was, was developed with National Highway and, and East Main Street coming together. Uh, this area was a little remaining piece of property that, that someone acquired. It's too small, really, to, to develop in any significant way, uh, but there was concern, long-term, uh, that it was not a very attractive site, and so they were, uh, individuals in the community that felt it was important that, that something be done with this property. So, when it became available, they purchased it, and then they came to the city to potentially sell it or, or, uh, grant an easement. Uh, after much discussion by council, uh, you have accepted, your plan is to accept the easement, uh, barring the vote tonight, uh, and the agreement is that we, the city will pay the taxes on this property, uh, both the city, county taxes and the school taxes that, that are due on an annual basis, um, and that would be the lease amount. The city would have the right to, uh, beautify that, that property or use it for other purposes, uh, that the city deems, uh, in the public interest, uh, and that it would be perpetual until the, one of the, either party chose to break that, uh, agreement. Um, so that is what's before you. Uh, it's a small piece of property. As I mentioned, it's mostly concrete right now, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll have to work on doing some beautification on, on it, but that's, that is what this is.
Okay, what's the pleasure of counsel with regard to this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the easement for parcel number one-six-zero-six-nine-zero-zero-zero-E-zero-zero-zero-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to compliment the manager. Uh, he, he's figured out that the building where Mr. Gray has his office used to be the Big Bear, and now you've got Slimy Corner down there. Congratulations, sir. We appreciate your, your learning the history of Thomasville as you progress. Thank you.
I still, I'm not convinced I know which one was the Big Bear. I usually just point in the downtown direction.
Right side of track.
Right next to the track.
And Big Bear was a, of course.
The entire building.
Yes, of course. Um, I want to thank the property owners who, uh, came to the city with this idea. Um, I think it's really proactive and very cool that we have this partnership now to beautify a little, little area that needs some love, so.
Anything else?
And we're definitely thankful for our beautification committee for definitely taking on this task for beautifying this, uh, national part, uh, not national part, but national highway area. Um, to definitely need some of that, uh, little bit of spoof.
Okay, you may record your votes. We have seven zero in the affirmative, so that has been approved. Uh, item C is consideration of lease agreement with communities and schools for one East Main Street. Uh, before we progress with this, uh, I, I have a request from, uh, Councilman Thrift that he be recused from voting on this item. So, what's the pleasure of the remaining council with regard to his request? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have to say on what grounds, Mr. Recused?
Uh, he, he's asked that, since he's the, the, the director of communities and schools, and it would not be proper for him to vote. Okay? All right, you may record your votes.
Oh. Uh, recording the vote to recuse.
Yeah.
Well, jump in.
Okay, we have six zero, so he has permission to be accused, uh, recused. An accused. Okay, now, uh, what's the pleasure, uh, let's go ahead with the, uh, consideration of the agreement. Do I have a motion that we approve this, uh, lease agreement?
I'll move that we approve this lease agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion?
I definitely want to thank our, our city manager and our council for, um, this proactiveness. Um, it definitely sends a, a really strong statement to our community about our continuing investment inside of our schools and our future, not only with the community and schools, but that private partner, uh, uh, partnership that we should have within vital services that provide necessary resources to our students.
Anything else? Okay, you may record your vote. Okay, I have a six-zero vote, so that has been approved. Thank you very much. We're now down to committee reports and assignments, or appointments, I mean. Uh, and I'll start off this evening with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Stars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm taking pride, I think, the third consecutive month, if I believe if I'm right, that I was the first one to get in my activities report. I cheated, I sent it on Sunday. Y'all have to step up your game. Uh, I have nothing else to add tonight, other than it's a beautiful day outside and I hope everybody's enjoying it. So, that'll stand as my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a relatively slow month for me, uh, as far as council-related activities, because we have, uh, we have a lot of stuff going on. But I have submitted a copy of my, uh, activities, and I'll let that stand as my report.
Okay, Councilmember Shell.
Mr. Mayor, I have submitted a copy of my activities. It was very short this month. Um, I also would like to say, Hunter, congratulations on having somewhere to put cities in school. That means a lot to us. And I'll let that stand as my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Thrift.
Thank you, Mayor. I do, on, on behalf of communities and schools and my board of directors, would like to thank our council for approving that lease. It's, it's nice to know when we lose a partnership that our city will step up and we can gain one that we've not had. So, I appreciate that. Um, I have submitted a copy of my activities to the clerk, and I will let that stand as my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Grimes?
The clerk has my activities. I'd like to ask a question. I don't know a lot of you folks out there. Are, do we have any potential city council candidates in the audience? Good. Your name, please, sir? Name?
Ed Craddock.
Ed Craddock, ma'am?
I'm Erica Sanders.
Okay. Thank you to the two of you. There will be an open seat, this seat right here. Um, and I just want to say I thank you for showing interest at this point. I don't know what you know about what we do and how we do it up to this point, but for showing that interest to start attending, and hopefully you will continue, council meetings, briefings, committee meetings. There is a tremendous amount to learn, and, and you don't get it by staying home and going to the polls and passing out pieces of paper with your name on it. And I commend you two. You guys are head, in my view, since I don't know any of the other people, head, heads above of the rest of them, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I attended a, a, a transportation meeting, the NPO meeting. You always come in by Zoom in Lexington, uh, this past week, and they had the meeting in their new city center, which is the old telephone building, when, the windstorm, wind.
Wind stream.
Wind stream.
Yeah.
It's neat. They really have done a great job, because I used to go in there and pay my telephone bill when I had a business over there, so I've been in it both times. That was a seven million dollar project that cost them fourteen million bucks. Remember this.
One cent.
Remember this. You're going to have to start doing this. Year in a time to get up enough money to, to, to redo a good city hall for Thomasville. We did this for the police station.
One cent, Grimes.
We did this for the police station, and we did this for this building right here. You can't take it out of your hide because you don't have it, so you need to set some back. So, remember that, my legacy.
We actually did three.
But we did it. We did it at a time. That's right. Um, I have shared with the folks, oh, do I got to do all that again?
I got you.
Okay, thank you. I've shared with the folks the last couple of months some historical stuff. Uh, the, the birthday of the army, two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth start of the, the American Revolution in April of this year, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the army, and the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration of Flag Day in June. Give you a little bit more stuff. The Fourth of July celebrations are centuries old, but are you aware that among the first took place in Salem, North Carolina, from articles in the Philadelphia, Pennsylvania newspaper, the Pennsylvania Gazette, we know when, where, and how the very first July Independence Day celebrations were held. It was held on July the fourth, nineteen seventy-seven, two-hundred-and-forty-nine years ago in Philadelphia, and was celebrated with demonstrations of joy and festivity, beginning at noon, armed ships and galleys docked on the river facing the city and discharging thirteen cannons in honor of the thirteen United States. Among those states was North Carolina, the twelfth, attaining statehood in seventeen eighty-nine. Six years later, following the first of, excuse me, first official July the fourth celebration in our state, and possibly the entire nation, took place in the Moravian Village of Salem. The Moravians who lived in the Salem, Salem community were fastidious record keepers, and through those archives, we know that on July the fourth, seventeen eighty-three, Governor Alexander Martin announced a day of Thanksgiving and peace. It was not until nineteen thirteen that the town of Winston and the village of Salem merged to form Winston-Salem as we know it today, your July history. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
For the, uh, thirty-sixth or thirty-seventh consecutive month, I am the last one to send Wendy my activities, so sorry. Um, but some say you save the best for last, so you're welcome, Wendy. Um, the zoning case is the first of its kind to come for us because it's the first since they changed. they changed the rules, and I'm annoyed by it, because typically something that we could have taken action on tonight will now have to wait. And I think that that's a barrier to growth and development, and I think that it's an expansion of government, which our state legislature allegedly is against. So, I just wanted to vocalize that I'm annoyed, because it's part of the fun of getting to sit up here behind a microphone and be annoyed about things. But there are also a ton of good things happening. I'm sure y'all have seen sidewalks being repaved, we have a dog park that's going to open up soon, there's disaster prep stuff happening that makes me feel a lot safer in our community, especially with all the storms, partnerships, infrastructure investment with the water lines, I know Doug likes that. And so, I'm just really happy to be sitting up here and excited for what's to come. It's a new budget year, so it's kind of like a new year in the middle of the year. So, I hope everybody is staying safe in the heat and excited about the next year. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you so much, Mayor York. I have submitted a copy of my activities to our clerk. It has been an eventful month for the month of July. I want to definitely thank our Thomasville Lions Club, which is a powerful organization with our community that has a long history of service. I had the honor of speaking as a guest speaker this past week, where I was able to provide a citywide update, some of the key initiatives that our city council has worked on over the past year, and some of those projects that we're really looking forward to in the near future. Also, definitely thankful to our candidates that are in attendance for city council and school board, as well as to all the people that are watching online as well that are candidates. Thank you for truly stepping up and giving our community an option. I really think it's important, not just this election, but every election, to give our community that choice, so I will let that stand as my report.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know if y'all have noticed, but we're being terrorized by a fly up here. Have a short report that I'll give this time. In this room here, a few weeks ago, we had the group from our city recreation department that came, the Fun on the Run Group, and we talked about the council meetings that we hold here, and also the elections, how they are done and so forth, so it was really good. With me was Councilman Thrift and also Councilman Johnson, and they were real attentive and seemed to enjoy the day and shared a few things with them, so we, we were happy to be able to do that. Back in June, there were nine of our citizens that were recognized as Thomasville All-Stars at the High Thomas Baseball Game, so congratulations to those who received that recognition this year. One of our, I know one of our All-Stars is in the, the crowd, that's Nancy Staten. She was my All-Star just a few years ago, and I, I do one every year, so any others here that I didn't recognize? Okay. And it was my pleasure to be at Ava's Jewelers a couple of weeks ago and greet Richard Petty. He came in to, to her jewelry store, and I was able to greet him there and have a little time with him, and he came to thank, thank Heather for her participation in foundation, the Petty Foundation that, that they use to reach out to children, and he and I were able to exchange challenge coins, which that was, seemed to be a treat for him, and it certainly was for me, so I was happy to have that opportunity. I have one appointment this evening that I'll make, and we've had an opening in the Thomasville Housing Authority for quite some time, but we have received an application for that, so I'm appointing Elaine Lee to that position, and it will take, she'll be notified, and the housing authority will be notified, and that will take effect immediately. So, I, I make that appointment at this time. Okay, we'll go now to our city manager, Mr. Brandt.
Thank you, Mayor. This past month has felt like a year, if you were inside city government. As we've informed the public, we were a victim of a cyber attack that did turn into a potential ransom situation. We've been dealing with that internally, with our entire network being taken down, and we are in the process of rebuilding that network. However, even though we have been faced with this difficulty, our daily business has continued to move forward. We continue to pick up solid waste, we continue to pick up recycling, our recreation still performs all of their duties, our police and fire are answering every call, so, so all the, the areas where we are directly touching this community and our activities, that continues. It's a lot of background information and, and events that are taking place that, that are difficult workarounds. And the most poignant part of that is what's happened with, with our utility billing, because that's where our finance works through the billing process, and we have over 11,000 customers. People may not realize we have that many customers in the city, and over the last couple of weeks, every billing that we've done has been done by hand, and so, I appreciate the work that's been done by our staff to come together, figure out a way, create a bill. It doesn't look like our normal bill, and we understand people being a little bit annoyed by that, because it looks different, they're not sure if they're getting duped or not, but it is a bill from the city, and we do ask them to pay that bill. We do still have issues, and we, it's going to take us a long time to fully recover, but based on information that we have, we think we're going to be a little bit closer to a regular bill next month, or in the next billing cycle, and it'll look a little bit more like original billing, and the process will no longer have to be done by hand, so we are getting back on our feet there. This has been difficult for our staff, especially the ones that utilize our financial systems and, and HR systems, but we are doing our best to recover as quickly as possible. I want to really shout out Eddie Bowling, Deputy Manager, that has basically led the, the repair process with the MIS Department. All of our staff, though, have, have done brilliantly dealing with these issues and doing the best we can do in the circumstances that we've been dealt. It is a crime, and it is being treated as such. We are working with various law enforcement agencies, trying to identify the criminals behind it, and maybe someday there'll be an actual charge against somebody. Unfortunately, this is becoming very common. We actually just got a report today that numerous government agencies were affected by a Microsoft cyber attack that, that attacked various agencies throughout the country. So, this is, this is just an issue that comes up. It's happening in North Carolina, it happens everywhere. It was our turn, basically, to get attacked, and, and we're trying to put in place those things that we need to do to protect us in the future, but it's a little bit like an alarm on a vehicle. All the alarm does is let people know that something has happened, and maybe chase away somebody from trying, but it doesn't mean that it won't happen again in the future. We still don't know the effect on our customers and whether any of their data has been compromised. We will follow the state procedures if we do determine that that has happened regarding notification to customers. And it has been a very busy week for other things, too. We had the, the Davidson County Championship Swim Meet this past weekend, which had people from all over the county come to Thomasville on Friday and Saturday. They love this facility, they want to come back every year, and it has been really, really great to see the growth of swimming. I'm, I grew up a swimmer, so it's near and dear to my heart, but most importantly, it, it's teaching children to swim, and we have children that are now swimming that never were able to swim before, and that is a life-saving activity on their behalf. So, one of the goals of this pool was to make sure that that would happen, and it is happening, and I'm going to let that stand, I've talked enough.
All right, thank you. Our city attorney, Ms. Whitman.
Good evening. I reiterate what an interesting month it has been, and those are words that we don't want to say, because it just puts a lot of work on a lot of people that could be doing much more productive things, but the employees and the staff have been amazing at how they've worked. It is phenomenal what they've done to make sure that the citizens in this community still have all their needs serviced and everything is operating as it should. It's quite phenomenal. And this evening, I wanted to welcome with me Blake Sherrill. Blake is an intern in our office this summer, he'll be spending some time, so you may see him around. He's thinking about going to law school, he'll be, he's a senior at Wesleyan Christian Academy this year. Very, very bright young man, nice history buff, so I'm sure he was enjoying your history as well, but if you see him out and about, snag him and show him a thing or two and chat with him, he's quite bright and very enjoyable. But thank you very much, and that's all. I've got some more for closed session, but we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. Our deputy city manager, Mr. Bowling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo what everyone else has said, because I, I don't think you can repeat it enough, but I'm so thankful that we work with some of the most amazing people who have pulled together and sat across the table and folded envelopes for the last three weeks. You know, we've had folks from every department across the city come off their regular job duties and help, and that's been phenomenal to see, it all come together, and just shows that we are part of a team, and so for that, I'm very thankful. I'll mention one other thing that we, we covered during the staff meeting, but I think it also bears repeating publicly. One, a couple weeks ago, on the way to the United Ways meeting, Chief Carter was on his way there as well, he both, both he and I serve on the board of directors, and on his way to the meeting, he showed up a couple minutes, like, right before the meeting started, and he's like, ah, man, I tried to get here as quick as I could, he says, I had an issue. I said, what was the issue? He says, well, there was a little four-year-old kid on the side of the road, did you see him when you came through? I'm like, no, I didn't see him at all. So, there was literally a four-year-old kid, four, you know, less than a foot off the yellow line on the side of the road, they had to stop, take custody of, and find the parents, and secure the, the child back to the parent. And so, he was recognized with a City of Thomasville challenge coin for going above and beyond. You know, obviously, he's police chief, he's supposed to do that, but he did it, and he made sure that the child was safe, and it's just a good reminder to always do the right thing and try to look for opportunities to help others, so I want to recommend, you know, just recognize Chief Carter for his efforts, and I'll let that stand as my report.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Well, we're now down to item nine, closed session for award information, personnel, and real estate. What's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion going to closed session to handle the items you mentioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Whoop. All right, seven to nothing, so we will now go into closed session.